Okay, the time is now 6:30 and the Wilmatt Public Library District Board of Trustees Public Hearing for the Budget and Appropriation Ordinance will begin now. If you are here to discuss the content of the Budget and Appropriation Ordinance, you may address the board at the public microphone now. Okay, this will conclude the time for the public hearing for the Budget and Appropriation Ordinance for fiscal year 2025-26, and we will now proceed with the regular business of this evening's meeting.
Good evening, everyone. It is now 6:35, and I would like to call this meeting on our Board of Library Trustees' Regular Meeting on Tuesday, August 19th, 2025. And may we have a roll call? Secretary DiLorenzo, please.
Yes. Trustee Beederman?
Here.
Trustee Cox?
Here.
Trustee DiLorenzo is here. Trustee Fishman?
Here.
Trustee Moulman is not here. Trustee Pasco?
Here.
Trustee Senate?
Here.
Very good, thank you. We'll now review the draft of the July 15th, 2025 Regular Board Meeting Minutes. Are there any comments or additions or corrections? All right, seeing none, may we have a motion to approve, please?
I move approval of the July 15th, 2025 Regular Board Meeting Minutes as presented.
Thank you. Trustee Senate, is there a second, please?
I second.
Second? Second or third?
We have trustee Beederman. Thank you. May we have a roll call, please, for the July 15th, 2025 Regular Board Meeting Minutes?
Yes. Trustee Beederman?
Yes.
Trustee Cox?
Yes.
Trustee DiLorenzo, yes. Trustee Moulman is not present. Trustee Pasco?
Yes.
Trustee Senate?
Yes.
Trustee Fishman?
Yes, thank you. The minutes are approved. At this time, we have our public comment, and any meeting attendees who have signed the visitor public comment registration form and who wish to address the Wilmatt Public Library District Board of Trustees may do so here. And we have a public microphone. Thank you. Seeing none, we'll now move on to our Treasurers' Report. Trustee Beederman, please.
Okay. We are into the first month of the new fiscal year, and that's the first one-twelfth, which is not necessarily representative of the entire year, although it expenses were 8.4% of the 12 months, which is just about one-twelfth. So it is representative, although it's not always going to be. We did have revenue, a bit of revenue from Illinois replacement taxes, which is a de minimis tax that corporations pay as income leaves the state. There's a replacement tax that replaces it back. It was a little over $12,000, so it's not a huge amount, but it's something that all municipal entities get a pass through on. We had some interest in both the general fund and in special reserve funds and in the type of bank account that entities like ours get. As we said, interest is, you know, in the first month is on track, despite the fact that it won't always be that way because we're on a cash basis. So sometimes expenses that cover more than one period are in one month, and so it doesn't always line up. But this month, it lined up pretty good. In the packets that everybody got, and this made public, it detailed a lot of the larger expenses that we've had for various budgeted items. And I think the biggest part is that Cook County is delayed in collecting their taxes. So everybody who lives here and probably is used to getting a tax bill now, we haven't seen them. So that also has an effect on the library district in their collection of that. But that's, as being a resident and taxpayer of this area for a long time, it's pretty common for them to be behind. But they always catch up, and it's not... So luckily, we have general funds to carry us through that time period. Of some other notes, Sandra and I are going to attend a PMA Library Seminar this later in September on elements about the tax levy, which I think you'll find pretty interesting. Also, we're getting ready for the audit, and we've engaged a new auditor. So there's going to be some preparation for that and some meetings with the new people. And from what I've read, this new entity has some definite upgrades over the prior ones, and we expect to have some additional certifications. And with all auditors, they usually offer some recommendations for improvement. Usually, they're nothing, you know, grand, but, you know, small things that can help out are always appreciated. Last Fed meeting, there was no... They passed on raising... On changing rates. It is anticipated that at the next meeting, which will be before our next meeting, rates are going to go down by quarter... By 25 basis points. That's what the anticipation is. So that means that any reinvestments of our CDs or treasuries will be done slightly less. But we're still in relatively high rates compared to where we were, like, four years ago. So that's pretty much all I have for this report. If anybody else has any questions?
No? Well done, thank you. Any questions about our checks and salaries detail? Pretty standard, as usual. All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Is there a motion to approve the Bills and Salaries Check Detail for July 2025 as presented?
I move approval of the Bills and Salaries Check Detail for July 2025 as presented.
All right, and is there a second, please?
I second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by trustee Pasco and seconded by trustee Cox. Trustee DiLorenzo, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Trustee Beederman?
Yes.
Trustee Cox?
Yes.
Trustee DiLorenzo, yes. Trustee Moulman is not here. Trustee Pasco?
Yes.
Trustee Senate?
Yes.
Trustee Fishman?
Yes, thank you. The motion is passed, and Bills and Salaries Check Detail for July 2025 as presented. Thank you. All right, moving on to our ordinance, our first action item, and that is ordinance number 2025/26-215, the Annual Budget and Appropriation Ordinance for Library Purposes for the fiscal year 2025-26. The ordinance was passed in tentative form at the July 15th, 2025 Regular Board Meeting. Director Austin, anything to add to that?
The document remains largely unchanged from what we passed at the July meeting. We've simply removed the word tentative from the document, and we've appended an additional signature page to the materials that you all saw at the previous meeting. We did post notice of the public hearing that we held immediately prior to this meeting in the newspaper the same week as our last board meeting. And if you have any questions about the ordinance or the purpose of the ordinance, I'm happy to take those questions now. Otherwise, the document remains essentially the same as what we saw last month.
And it was posted in the Chicago Tribune, was that?
In the Wilmatt Life portion of the Chicago Tribune.
I think it's pretty self... We had explanatory background. Anyone have any further explanation? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to a motion, please. Then may we have a motion to approve?
I move approval of ordinance number 2025/26-215, Annual Budget and Appropriation Ordinance for Library Purposes for Fiscal Year 2025 to 2026 as presented.
And is there a second, please?
I second said ordinance.
Thank you, great. Trustee DiLorenzo, may we have a motion, please?
Yes. Trustee Beederman?
Yes.
I'm sorry, roll call, thank you.
Trustee Cox?
Yes.
Trustee DiLorenzo, yes. Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Trustee Moulman is not present. Trustee Pasco?
Yes.
Trustee Senate?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed for the ordinance 2025-26-215, Annual Budget and Appropriation Ordinance for Library Purposes for the fiscal year 2025-26 as presented. Motion carried, thank you. Moving on to our next action item, Resolution 2025-26-2021, Amending a Plan and Estimating Costs. The resolution outlines potential long-range capital fund expenditures in the special reserve fund incorporating maintenance projects identified in the 2020 Capital Reserve Study and estimates presented as part of the 2024 Space Needs Assessment.
Okay, yes, so in the resolution document itself, there's a bit of history that is documented on the first page whereby it discusses how the library district was established and how we originally passed this ordinance back in... Or this resolution, rather, back in 1990. And over the course of several years following, related to various renovation projects, this resolution has been updated in an effort to help the board, staff, and the community to be aware of what capital needs the organization, the building will have over the course of its development. And since we've... As President Fishman just said, as we've recently conducted our capital reserve study, which was an inventory of every physical asset of this building, as well as the most recent space needs assessment, we have a clear picture of what all of the capital assets of this building are, what their current condition is, and a fresh set of estimates of what a renovation project might cost the library district. The last time that we passed this resolution, which effectively is an estimate of what our needs would be for these capital plans, was back in 2021. And it is time to provide fresh numbers to reflect our current understanding of what our capital commitments would be. This document really is just a opportunity for the library district to memorialize what the capital needs are for the future. It is a non-binding document. It really does not contain any action. Any action that the library district and board would take as a result of these estimates are merely for planning purposes that would set us up for being able to conduct those projects going forward and would require a separate set of actions. What this represents is an understanding of what the scope of the work is that would need to be done to basically update, maintain, or improve, or augment this building. And these are the current figures that we have estimated for that. Some of the content of this on Attachment A may even include some projects that we have already completed. We have done special reserve fund activity over the course of the last year specifically related to some technological improvements, including the replacement of the telephone system as well as our computing systems. And you will see that that number and figure still remains in this plan. And that is because those projects will likely need to be completed by a future administration and board, and so it is important for us to pass along this information to future generations that we will need to plan accordingly for the replacement of those systems in the future. There may be some other initiatives that we would complete that might not require us to include that information in the plan. That said, even if we were to endeavor a renovation project, we may still need to renovate the library again at some point in the long-standing future, and it would be wise for us to include those figures in there. To that end, the very last item in Attachment A is the discussion of the estimates for a renovation project for the library. When this document was last approved in 2021, we were operating off of numbers from several years prior that were suggesting that a renovation project might cost in the range of about $3 million. When we conducted the 2024 Space Needs Assessment and Strategic Facility Plan with our architect in 2024, we learned that the scope of the project that we were discussing at that time for the renovation of the first and lower level was about twice that figure. And so we have updated that on this document accordingly. We also have a current quote for what our carpeting replacement would cost, and so that item has also been updated in line item D. But those are the changes from the previous version of this document, and this will hopefully be a refreshed planning tool for us as we consider capital improvements in the future. Are there any questions about this document?
Just a quick question. D, when you say carpeting throughout the library or just the carpeting we've been talking about in the 900s section?
The carpeting, we're due for... So according to the 2020 Capital Reserve Study, the wear of the carpeting on the first and second floor of the library is past its 10-year mark, and it is eligible for replacement. And I will just say anecdotally, as I was considering looking at the carpeting for the former 900s room here on the lower level, if I placed one of the attic stock versions of our tile against the current carpeting that has been walked on by approximately 1,000 people each day, it is evident that it is worn, and you would be quite surprised to see them side by side, knowing that they were both born from the same lot. So we are looking at more of the totality of what the need of the carpeting is for the building. Some spaces have been done more recently, like this room, was re-carpeted last year. But there are a number of spaces in the building that do need to be re-carpeted.
So that estimate, then, is...
Is more comprehensive, yes.
Thank you for that clarification.
I may have missed this, but... So this was last done in 2021, but is it done every five years approximately then? Or just... Is there a cadence?
There is not a cadence for it, and I recommend that perhaps we do this more as a procedure, as we become more aware of what project costs are. I think it was a bit of a shock to the previous board when we were going through the Space Needs Assessment last year, when we had this concept that that project might be in the range of about $3 million, but that figure had been stale, having not been adjusted over a 10-year timeframe, inflation, costs of goods and services. It would be helpful to have those numbers refreshed as we become more aware of them. The tool that we did receive from our architect and engineer on that capital reserve study in 2020 produced a really elegant Excel spreadsheet that is attractive to an administrator that shows us what the current wear and condition of all of our assets are and has a factor in there that estimates what those costs would be over time if you adjust the year in which the object would be replaced. And they all have a different formula attached to them. But that said, nothing beats, you know, a current bid for, you know, like, knowing what this carpeting is going to cost for 2,000 square feet, you can kind of estimate what it's going to be for 70,000 square feet. So I think it would be wise for us to update this on a more regular basis, and I'm going to recommend that this is a procedure that we do concurrent with the adoption of the Budget and Appropriation Ordinance each year because there's an element of the special reserve fund plan that's baked into the Budget and Appropriation Ordinance. So they kind of go hand in hand.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
I think so. Good question, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none. May we have a motion, please?
I move approval of Resolution Number 25... Or 2025-26-221, a resolution amending a plan and estimating costs as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. Motion by trustee Senate and seconded by trustee Cox. Trustee DiLorenzo, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Trustee Beederman?
Yes.
Trustee Cox?
Yes.
Trustee DiLorenzo, yes. Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Trustee Moulman is not present. Trustee Pasco?
Yes.
Trustee Senate?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion approved. We'll now move on to our action item C, which is the Illinois Public Library Annual Report. Iplar?
Iplar.
It's always iplar, right. All right, for fiscal year 24-25. And Director Austin again.
Okay, thank you. This is one of our annual procedures in compiling all of our statistical... Our statistics for the prior fiscal year, which closed on June 30th. The report is included in the packet in its tentative form, I suppose. This report is a contingency of our application for the per capita grant. The per capita grant averages about $40,000, and this document is also rather assistive to us for a number of planning purposes. It also is a benchmark for our trending. In the director's report this month, I begin by summarizing the Illinois Public Library Annual Report and a number of the key statistics and outcomes from this. And I've also summarized a comparison between the prior fiscal year of 2023-24 compared against 24-25. And a couple of those key metrics that I wanted to share with you include some numbers that we have been recognized for nationally with Library Journal when they were doing their STAR Library Review a few years back. So I wanted to point that out, too, because those are some key statistics that we've all been paying attention to for a while. So we are pleased to report that we're moving positively in all the directions. Our physical library visits rose by 8% over the previous fiscal year. While the total programs offered were held flat, the attendance of our programs increased by 5%, so we saw increased engagement. The combined physical material circulation and digital circulation for Wilmatt Library increased by 1%. Our print circulation was down by 3%, but we do have a trend that we've been observing that a lot of the print has been replaced by digital. And that... that a lot of the, the print has been replaced by digital, and that number went up by 10%. So that's a pretty significant increase there. And as I've mentioned before, digital circulation currently accounts for about 30% of the library's circulation. Our research database usage increased by 5%. Our public computer usage increased by 20%, and in the year prior, it had increased by 13%. So we're really seeing a remarkable trend in computer usage. Our Wi-Fi sessions were up by six, and in terms of use of our physical spaces, we can attest that that is true, even after the introduction of the accept page on our, our Wi-Fi network. We do see that there are a lot of people in chairs around the library taking advantage of our high-speed internet. And traffic on our website also increased by 3% this past year. So we're moving in the right direction on all of those key metrics, and we're really pleased with those statistics. There's more specific granular statistics that are included in the report. And as one of the contingencies of filing the report, we also had to ask two of our trustees to conduct an audit of the minutes. We have a binder that contains all of the minutes and actions that the library has taken over the course of the fiscal year. And Trustee Pascoe came in on Sunday to review the, the minutes, and Trustee Mulman came in today, and they both found the minutes to be complete. So thank you for your review of those documents, and we are ready to submit this report pending your approval. Do you have any questions about the content of the report?
This is the annual, right?
Yes. July 1 to June 30.
Thank you, Trustee Pascoe, for coming in on a Sunday. Library visits, I noticed, it's section 14.1, attendance in the library, 262,421. Sounds substantial. Just great.
It's a lot of traffic.
That's a lot of traffic. No wonder the carpeting is wearing out.
And how many cards are outstanding?
We currently have nearly 18,000 cards.
So a lot of people using, a lot of cardholders.
A lot of cardholders.
Using them for multiple, for many purposes.
And the metric that we're, we're using now to maintain those cards is that as long as you are a resident of Wilmet, as long, or, or Kenilworth, and you do not move from your address, you don't need to come in and renew your card. And I can attest that over two-thirds of these nearly 18,000 cards have been used in the last six months to check out a physical item, which is a pretty, a pretty remarkable statistic. That's a high rate of engagement for our community.
And that's just, if I may ask, that doesn't even include patrons from neighboring communities. We know we have quite a few Evanston residents who use our libraries. So that's a part of our daily door count?
They are, yes.
But the statistics are impressive, just with our Wilmet and Kenilworth patrons alone. Nice. And it seems like, just when you think that everyone has a library card, I'm impressed that staff continue to seek out, go to schools, go to park districts, go to wherever, and find people, young, maybe, patrons who don't have cards. So that's impressive, that when you think everything's been covered, not so. So I'm delighted. They're tenacious in their search for new cardholders. All right. Any other questions for Director Austin? All right. Thank you. Then we will move on to a, is there a motion to approve the Illinois Public Library for fiscal, report for fiscal year 2425?
I move to approval of the Wilmet Public Library's Illinois Public Library Annual Report, Iplar, for fiscal year 2425 as presented.
And is there a second, please?
I second.
Okay, thank you. Motion has been brought forward by Trustee Biederman and seconded by Trustee Di Lorenzo. Trustee Di Lorenzo, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Trustee Biederman?
Yes.
Trustee Cox?
Yes.
Trustee Di Lorenzo, yes. Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Trustee Mulman is not present. Trustee Pascoe?
Yes.
Trustee Senate?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed. We'll now move on to the director's report, please.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I have a few statistics and details that I want to share with you this month. I'll try to keep my remarks brief, but that's not possible, because I'm me.
And there's a lot to talk about.
There's a lot to talk about.
With the fabulous things going on.
All right. So, as we were saying before, we had just over 24,000 visitors in July, so great traffic, nearly 806 unique users each day. We welcomed 207 new cardholders in July, including 46 new students at District 39. Welcome back-to-school students. As I said a moment ago, we have nearly 18,000 unexpired registered cardholders, and that is the highest number of active library cards that we have had in recent documented history. And here we are towards the end of August. September is National Library Card Sign-up Month, so if you don't already have a card, we're coming to find you. We will, we are out in the community at various events, as President Fishman just mentioned. We've been at Kenilworth Food Truck Mondays. We're going to be at the Block Party on September 6th from noon to 4:00. Matthew is going to be there, our circulation manager. So if you don't have a library card, stop by the booth and see Matthew, and we'll get you registered. We had strong circulation in July, with 58,000 physical items circulating, and over 18,000 checkouts via Overdrive. Another digital platform of note this month, Hoopla, saw its highest-ever usage this month with 1,800 checkouts. Speaking of our, our catalog and patron database, our consortium, Cooperative Computer Services, is going to be welcoming the addition of the Vernon Area Public Library in Lincolnshire. They are going to be the 32nd member of our consortium, officially joining us on September 3rd. And with the addition of Vernon Area Library, we'll be adding over 150,000 titles, around 180,000 physical items, and approximately 23,000 new patrons. Our library card and patron database are going to be offline to accommodate the migration and integration of this library into our system. So for the period from Thursday, August 28th at 9:00 PM through sometime on Tuesday, September 2nd, the catalog is going to be down. You can still check out items and retrieve your holds at the library, but you'll need to bring your library card during this time, because we won't be able to look up your account without it. There will be a few services that are going to be affected during this time. There will be no online account access, and that includes you won't be able to place holds online over that weekend. There will be limited ability to search the catalog online. The records are not all going to be up to date, they're just going to be a snapshot of the last moment that that catalog had been indexed. Checking out digital and downloadable content via Libby and Hoopla will be available to existing account holders, but if you don't already have an account, you won't be able to make one during that downtime. We really encourage you to do that. Access to some online resources that require a library card will not be available, and that includes a limited ability to make self-service study room reservations. So if you think you're going to need a study room that weekend, get in touch with our staff now for that. The outdoor lockers are not going to be accessible during that time, and we will also not be able to issue library cards. That said, we will do everything that we possibly can to meet your needs during that timeframe, so let us know how we can serve you. But we're really excited to welcome Vernon Area to our consortium. All right. One of the big news items for Wilmet Library this month is that we achieved a significant milestone in our collection work this month. We're working on our collection revitalization project, and over the course of the, the past 18 months, we have been working towards the goal that we accomplished effectively on August 1st, which was to unite all of the adult and teen nonfiction collection on the south side of the lower level of the library. This vastly improves the order, flow, access, and discoverability of these popular collections. As I said, over the past 18 months, this monumental task is the combined efforts of the adult services, technical services, and shelving teams, and is an achievement that has actualized a goal that our architect had in his vision from our Space Needs Assessment in 2024. And we did this all entirely with our team, just with our staff. Early accomplishments in this project include the establishment of our new travel hub on the first floor, which brings one of our most popular collections to prominence and immediate access for our patrons right here on the first floor where they enter. It also brings the unification of our world language fiction collection with the rest of our fiction collections on the first floor and highlights them. It also allows us to introduce our first, our, our popular book club collection to the media room space, which will soon be home to even more new and popular book collections in the coming months. We'll tell you more about that soon. But first, we have a small room renovation project that we need to complete, and that all started with our goal to replace the carpeting in the lower level north room formerly known as the 900s room. So when we achieved this accomplishment of moving all the nonfiction collections over to the south side of the building, we had effectively removed all of the collections from the 900 room. We integrated all of them over here on the south side. Over the course of the past several months, we have been talking about an asbestos abatement process, and that is the next big project that we have coming up. So we expect our contracted asbestos abatement team to get here on Monday, September 8th, and to complete their work within 10 working days by Friday, September 19th. All of their work is going to be completed in unoccupied spaces of the library while the library is, is open, and we're going to conduct this work on the second shift between 3:00 PM and 11:00 PM to reduce any impacts to the public. During this two-week period of contract work, no staff or volunteers are going to be able to access the areas that are adjacent to the, what is covered by the blue carpeting currently, that nasty blue carpeting that we're trying to get rid of and replace. And so that includes the hallway in front of Books Down Under, the Books Down Under entrance, access to the storage rooms, the former 900s room, and the north stairs that connects that north room to the media room above. This requires a lot of coordination, and our communications on this are going to be going out here shortly, so you'll see some news on the website about this, so you can follow along with our, our milestones. We are coordinating with our friends, because BDU will need to be closed during this period and into early October. So sorting and storage of donations will not be possible, given the affected areas. So for now, the friends are going to be pausing book donations between September 1st and October 30th, as storage and sorting are affected by the project. We're going to post information on our website and on the Friends' website as well, so that there's more information there. So if you do have items that you wish to donate to the library, please do it before the end of the month. Or hang on to it, or consider donating to one of our partners, and we've got information about where else you can make donations during this time. The Friends Bookstore, Books Down Under, will be closed starting September 6th, so Friday, September 5th is going to be their last open day to shop, and they will likely remain closed through at least October 10th, given some of the things that we have planned. The Friends are planning to celebrate BDU's fall reopening with a pop-up shop, possibly here in the auditorium, and weather-dependent, maybe outside on the plaza, and we'll announce that date when, we have a better idea when that's going to be. So we're really grateful for the cooperation of our friends with this process. We know you're going to miss the bookstore, but it will be back open again here soon. Following that abatement project, in the week of September 19th, we are going to be painting that north room of the lower level in late September, and that includes the hallway, the north room, and the stairway and railings that are adjacent to that space. And once the painting is completed, then we're going to install the carpeting. And again, that will cover the hallway, the north room, and the stairwell. We are having a little bit of a challenge right now getting the carpeting that we have targeted for this space, so we're not quite sure about the lead time for when that's going to be available. So we don't want to reopen that room until we have a finished floor. So we can't give you a date just yet of when the north room is going to be available, but I will let you know as soon as that happens. I'll pause there for a moment. Does anyone have any questions about the asbestos abatement project or any of that activity?
Will there be some signage up around about the closure of the no donations? Because I know I just come in with my books, and so there's signs up.
Yes.
Prevent people from carrying in heavy books and having to carry them back out.
Yep, so we're going to send out information via our email newsletter, we will have signage up. We're even going to provide some printed flyers in case folks can't hold on to the stuff, they just cleaned their basement, and they want to get rid of that box. There's other options that we've identified for those folks, too. We do know that some folks will probably still leave their things behind, and we'll try to accommodate those, but yes, we will have signage as well.
When they leave them behind, what are they going to just, like, dump them somewhere?
Don't encourage them. But yes, we have spaces where people will just drop it and walk away. So we encourage you to, please, don't do that.
Well, Halloween is coming up, so maybe give them your trick-or-treaters.
Well, there you go. That's a clever idea, or fill your little free libraries.
Maybe a sign on that staff door? Is that a possibility?
It's part of the plan.
Okay.
Just thinking of all the spots. Yeah, thank you. That sounds good.
This is more of a comment, but that's great news about adding another library to our consortium. I mean, speaking as someone who probably 40 to 50% of the items he checks out, many of which are print, I might add, so, I mean, I didn't my part, but I'm, we'll get them next year with, to reverse the decline, but great news, it builds a greater resilient library community in the area. So on behalf of the, as of the patrons, thank you and to your staff for accomplishing this.
Cool, thank you. All right. I will move on with a couple other highlights from my report, although this one is maybe not so much of a highlight. It is with mixed emotions that I wanted to share that our technical services manager, Jessica Thompson, has taken a new opportunity. She will make a lateral move to be the TS manager at the Northbrook Public Library, so still within the CCS Consortium and still very much a strong partner. Jessica, during her six-and-a-half years at the library, demonstrated commitment to our value of continuous improvement through a variety of updated and enhanced processes, including catalog record maintenance, collecting, collection processing, planning and alignment, advocating for our data-driven decision-making by leading our engagement with Collection HQ, which is a tool that our librarian selectors use to help analyze the collections, as well as partnering with CCS and facilitating reporting for our selectors. She really brought stability and growth to our team, following a series of retirements, and helped to ensure the continuity of our operations during the pandemic years, and was also a key partner in the implementation of our RFID process. She has, has really been a remarkable member of our team. We were really sad to see her leave. We're thrilled for Northbrook, and we have this position currently posted, so we're recruiting for our, our new TS manager. And our assistant TS manager, Shanti DeCosta, is managing the team in the interim, and we hope that we'll be able to recruit and bring that new manager onboard, hopefully here in October. So we'll keep you posted about that. Also from my report, I wanted to share that we just wrapped up our summer reading club, so I don't have all the statistics and final numbers to share with you. We'll do that next month, as we typically do. But I did want to share that our preliminary reporting suggests that we are seeing higher rates of engagement and finishers than we've had in recent years, and we've got a lot of really great anecdotal feedback from folks, including someone just this evening, that said that they really appreciated the quality of the selections on the book carts. So our librarians did a great job of selecting prizes for our finishers. We, again, want to thank the Friends of the Library for their sponsorship of our associated programming and the clubs, and for their incentive prizes. And I also want to give a shout out to the wonderful volunteer corps that we had this year. We had a team of 40, 16 volunteers that staffed the youth services reading booths, and they did an absolutely remarkable job checking children and tweens throughout the, the summer, celebrating their accomplishments, and helping them get their prize books. There were over 350 shifts that those volunteers covered, so that's a lot of, of management for the staff to coordinate with those volunteers, but also a high rate of engagement for our first time working with such a large group of volunteers for this purpose, so we really appreciate their service. And I also want to recognize that we had two adult volunteers that helped us out as well, including a longtime summer reading club assistant, Susan Zonia, as well as the president of the Friends of the Wilmet Public Library, who specifically wanted to see the outcomes of the work that the Friends have sponsored. So we really appreciate Cecilia Clark's service, and she also anecdotally told us that her kids came through the program as well, and it was really fun to be there to see this. So really grateful for the support of our volunteers, and I also want to add that we had nine teens that also volunteered in the studio, our makerspace, this summer. had 19s that also volunteered in the studio, our maker space, this summer, and they had 27 two-hour shifts that they were fulfilling. So a lot of volunteer engagement with our teens this summer. So thank you all for your support. And then the last thing I'll mention, just by brief summary, is that there were a range of really exciting and informative and engaging programs that we offered over the course of this past month, including everything from cha-cha dancing on the lawn, an Elvis Presley tribute concert, a Mario Kart tournament, a course in Canva Basics, wine glass etching, a program on art history with the Monuments Men, a lecture on the life and legacy of Ruth Bader Ginsburg, and a visit from the Scales and Tails Traveling Zoo. We had a sloth, and so many more cool programs. That's kind of a broad overview of my report. Are there any questions or comments that you have about library activities in July?
Sounds like a lot of really great stuff.
It was a fun month.
Yeah, any chance there's another of the Canva?
Oh, yeah. It is. We'll definitely reprise that.
I just want to give also a shout-out, just to add to your comments about all the work that went on to the 900s Room. The shelving, the moving, the readapting things. A lot of work from staff, and thank you very much.
It was a real collaborative effort. Our adult services team did a remarkable job of assessing the quality of the collections. The shelving team did an absolutely remarkable effort, specifically the work, the physical labor that was put in by our manager, Pat C. DeVono, and her assistant, Mary Dorman, as well as a lot of effort in helping to reclassify and promote the accessibility of the collections via the catalog from the technical services team. It was really a great collaborative effort.
Fantastic. Great. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We'll move on to our committee reports. ILA and Rails. Trustee Senate, please.
So for Rails, Rails, along with several partners, was honored by the Illinois Library Association Intellectual Freedom Award for the development of the Unite Against Book Bands Regional Response Team. This award recognizes volunteers for their outstanding support of fellow librarians and contributions to defending intellectual freedom. In 2023, a coalition of Illinois library organizations, including ILA, ILE, Rails, IHLS, and Carley, began recruiting volunteers for regional teams of staff, of library staff who would be willing to get involved on a local level to help preserve intellectual freedom. And they provided support to several libraries in the form of resources and information and to handle, help the libraries handle situations where there have been objections to displays or materials in their libraries. And that award is being presented sometime in October. At the beginning of July, we were commenting that while the Illinois State Library did receive its IMLS award for this fiscal year, the federal 2026 budget reduces the IMLS budget to only $6 million, which is intended to close IMLS at the beginning of 2026. However, there may have been a glimmer of good news. On July 31st, a bipartisan group of U.S. senators rejected cuts to education and libraries and are recommending nearly full funding for IMLS and the Department of Education. That will still require support from 60 senators, and there will be a House version, but if approved, that budget would take effect October 1st. Also, speaking of federal government, the U.S. Congressman Sean Caston visited the Rails Bowling Burt Service Center on Wednesday, August 6th, for a tour of the Rails delivery operations. The ILA president and Illinois State Library Director were also there, and after the tour, there was a conversation to discuss the current state of Illinois libraries and federal funding considerations. So it's pretty exciting that members of Congress are taking an interest in how our libraries are funded. On the state level, Senate Bill 1550 was introduced by Illinois Secretary Gianoulias and has been signed by Governor Pritzker, which allows funds to be made available by the state to improve or enhance the security of libraries. And this will take effect on January 1st. Just in summary, I think we should feel very fortunate to live in a state where our government supports libraries, we live in a community that celebrates libraries, and we have this library with such wonderful staff that puts on such great programming and is constantly thinking and innovating and coming up with new ways to help improve all of our lives. That's my rails report.
Hey, a quick question. So is the funding mainly for cybersecurity or like physical security?
It's physical security.
Okay. And is that something you have to apply for? Yeah?
Hi? Anthony is shaking his head.
I think it's a grant, yes. And I think one of the contingencies of that, and it's a wonderful program, not a lot of libraries can afford to install access control, you know, safety cameras, et cetera, in their public spaces. It's designed to help those organizations that don't already have those systems to take advantage of that and step into the 21st century with their security. So, yeah, that's great.
Thank you. Sounds good. And the Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee?
So the next meeting is September 4th. I don't have a report at this time, because the committee hasn't met in a few months.
And Trustee Mullman will be joining you on the committee.
Yes, I'm very excited about that.
Glad to have her step up for that.
Thank you.
I will add, from ILA, that the ILA Annual Conference is October 14th through 16th at Rosemont, and we have a couple staff that are going to be representing Willmet Library there. And I will add for trustees that Thursday, the 16th, is trustee day. So if any of you are interested, there is a specific set, track of events that are geared towards elected officials, including one, How to Be a Great Trustee. You all probably don't need that, but there is a, there's a breakfast that's sponsored by a legal firm, a mock board meeting, workshop, be the best trustee that you can be. An overview, this is an important update. The State Library has updated the Serving Our Publix Illinois Public Library standards. There is a fifth iteration of this, of this manual that has been in development over the course of the last year, and it was just recently approved. I don't believe that we're getting, this is the first time we're not going to get a print version of it, so again, that trend, moving a little bit away from print into digital. The standards are what we need to abide by in order to apply for and receive the per-capita grant, and also sets framework for how we can be the best library that we can be. So there'll be an hour-long overview of that new guide as well, as well as some engagement from the Intellectual Freedom Committee. So I encourage you all to consider what you're doing on October 16th, and if you're interested, let me know, and we can get you registered.
Sounds good. Thank you. Moving on, is there any new business? Seeing none, all right. May we have a motion to adjourn, please?
I move that the board adjourn this meeting.
Thank you, Trustee Pascoe. It is 7:25. We will note the time, and we just need a voice vote. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn is passed, and 7:25. Thank you, everyone, and thank you for our gallery.
Thank you.
Good night.